Yours is really good.
I don't know what he's doing over there.
So, okay, we can ask about.
Well, I said sometimes I don't ask.
First goes first.
Something else.
Okay. Jean Enrau.
Here.
Lexi Murphy here. Jay Jones. Carol Hongkum.
Here.
Steve Heron.
Here.
Okay, that means we have four of them. First order of business is to approve our agenda for this evening. Does anyone have any requests to change? Add, multiply, or divide the items on?
I'll move to approve.
Are we going to skip the audience?
Oh, yep, you're right, I already did that. I'm sorry. I mean, I didn't, I already checked it off, like it happened.
Oh, okay.
Nope, I'm sorry, back it up. Yep, we'll hold that if you want. Steve, are there any inquiries from the audience? You have all signed in, correct? Have a copy of the agenda if you wish. Okay, thank you, thank you, Lexi, for pointing that out. Okay, Steve, would you still like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Steve's made the motion and Lexi has seconded to approve tonight's agenda. Do we have any other discussion related to the agenda? And call for a vote, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries, agenda approved. Approve the minutes from the 12:04, 23 regular meeting. Which is the next, very next page of your packet, does go a little bit off the back page. It's been so long, so is there anything that we can revise on that? I'll make the motion that we approve the December 4th minutes. Okay, and the motion from Lexi.
I'll second.
And a second by Jean. To approve the minutes from 12:04, 23's regular meeting as they are presented in your packet. Any other comments or corrections? If no one has any, we can call for a vote, all in favor of approving the minutes from the 12:04, 23 regular meeting, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries, minutes approved. Payment of claims, you do have one additional, as well as the green claim. Oh, green or red, Christmas color claims report. Thank you for that. Do you have any questions related to specific items that either Kelly or Michelle could answer for you?
So this is what we pay for G-Works each year?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, under the general fund, we have Alex Air Apparatus, camera and extrication blow.
Thank you for the part of your department.
And here we paid another $11,000 straight out, so, and you said you...
He's got one day left. Tomorrow he's gonna, the day I'm gonna be done, so.
And then everything, or was there gonna be some small ones left, or you think so?
That's not what I mean.
And then, have you heard any trees done?
Last year. Uh, the chipper, he said he'd be here after Christmas, so.
And then he'll grind up the ones over at the...
So we won't get our tree done tomorrow?
Hmm?
We'll get our tree done.
If not, then it's up to us.
Oh, kidding, Kelly.
You have that yours done yet?
Uh.
Oh, okay.
That's okay. Not at that moment, right?
You got his point over, right? Well, yeah, but, you know, it's still live in the middle, so it's not gonna fall down, so.
Kelly, just to clarify, he won't, they won't be done with all the trees, though, there'll be, still be trees left.
Right, there'll still be trees left.
Oh, okay.
That's what I...
They'll be done with the money that we...
Money, okay.
Okay, I thought you were done with all the trees, so, okay.
No, it's, okay. Can I ask you a question about that? Probably at this time, though. It's not really on that topic, we're on the claims report right now. For council to question payment of these claims.
That's Steve Cook, about two-thirds of the way down on the front page, inspection, what's that inspection?
That is the caps, oh, that's where you want to see it. Oh, that's caps, for the inspection of the, the caps inspection, that you gotta copy of the G-Report summary. I don't see if they have one.
The 41 pages.
Yeah, whatever it was. That's why we didn't copy it. It was a bunch. That's why we gave you the summary page. You have the rest, if you want to look at it, it's very thorough.
And I guess I was not under the impression that they were going to actually have that done. I mean, I didn't realize that, I thought they were just setting up a school thing to check into this building, or any building, about doing a business. So I guess I was kind of amazed. That this was...
Well, they'd asked previously about having, if we had a commercial inspector, commercial inspector, because we had several house inspectors. People that's new individuals, but...
Yep, I remember that.
We had no connections, they were trying to find someone who could and look into it, and then they didn't have anyone, and then all of a sudden they got this guy, he said they had availability like within a day, and so they went ahead and did it, but... And they were expecting, they were hoping to be here for tonight's meeting, but because I'm not on the school board anymore, the school board is meeting right now as well, so they have to be at that, because they're seniors, and they have to attend that one. So, that's why they can't really answer this part, which I was gonna tell you more about later in the thing, but... They expect to be here, if not on the 2nd, then 18th, when we're over the next meeting, and give you more details and...
Is this something that we approved the CAPS program to use?
That's the whole next door.
Yep. What, we, so this was something that we approved the CAPS program to use at the banks, to use the bank?
They're not using it yet, they're using it as their project to investigate the validity and possibility of using it as something. What would be best for the town right now, and for the city to use that property that is unused. So they took it as their project.
Oh, so the expense, though, of the inspection is on the city now?
As would be the asbestos removal, which we talked about later in the agenda, but there are no quotes for that, they haven't done that, obviously, but no one has, and it's, we, yeah, we'll discuss that later in the agenda.
Okay, but that's what that fine 990 is for?
Do you have this...
That's already been paid?
Is it?
No, it hasn't been paid.
I sent it to you.
We approve it and then I'll...
So, yeah, I think it'd be good if she could jump to the one next year, maybe, and also see the students step on the...
Oh, the students themselves, okay. Is there not planning on doing the business, is there, are they?
To do April, they're, no? They're still figuring that out, so part of what their idea was, was just that they needed to see whether the building was gonna fall in on itself, or whether it was safe to...
Well, I already tried to get rid of it today anyhow, so. What'd you find out, Kelly, about the gas leak?
It'll be fixed tomorrow, the gas is turned off to that one for instance.
Okay, it was just a...
Just the part that was that, a control valve?
New, basically, aren't they?
Well, not the one that...
Oh.
There's four of them in there, two of them are brand new.
Oh, I see.
So the G-Works goes on along with the claims list?
Yes, that's the one additional.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Steve and a second by Lexi to approve payment of claims as presented on the green or red claims report and the additional G-Works annual software license and support agreement.
And I'm gonna make a comment, I think when you have some time, you should look into something else, because I know sometimes you get pretty frustrated with them. Maybe there's something better, or less money, but I think, you don't know, you don't look.
I'll do some checking on that, too.
Okay.
I did speak to the city clerk in Sutherland about what they had.
What is theirs called, or don't you know?
Clerk, Clerk Net, or Clerk.
Okay.
But it was developed by a former city clerk.
Oh, okay. Sounds good. Well, I just think we should at least check into it. Not that you haven't been helped here with G-Works, but I know there's been some bad days, too. And I suppose that will be what maybe other ones do, I don't know. I just think sometimes it's kind of complicated. That's all I got, I'm back.
All right, so with that motion and a second, we have, we have on the table, and, we have on the table, not a table, we have the offer to approve the payment of claims, a motion and a second, sorry. So, all in favor of approving payment of claims as presented this evening, including the additional ones, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries, claims to be paid. Proceed bank rec journals, you have... You doing that again? More than that? I think just... Okay, that's me. All right, so you all have that. Hold those, not Michelle, we need copies for Alex. Okay, we are to item number nine on the agenda. The old office for newly elected officials, if you would come forward, we have, let's, so, we won't make you hurdle that, maybe go around here. We'll start with Marlin first, make you all do it individually. I'll let you pull that, I don't want to be trying to smash you up. But one at a time, please raise your right hand, and...
I'm Marlin Sharter, I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all duties of the Office of Mayor in Polina as now or here and after required by law.
Thank you, and welcome.
I'm Nicole Jacobs, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of these, of the State of Iowa, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all duties of the Office of City Council in Polina as now or here and after required by law.
Awesome, thank you, and welcome.
Hi, Jean Enrau, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all duties of the Office of City Council in Polina as now or here and after required by law.
Thanks very much, and welcome back. Okay, we do this at another time when he's able to come into the office with either myself or Michelle. Okay, item number 10. The can cage agreement is something they came up with and offered, or offering here. They did talk to Kelly, if you want to talk a little bit more about that, or if you were there with that.
I talked to one of them, I can't remember her name, but she, yeah, she said it worked great for what they need to do, and we gotta move a few things, but, yeah.
So right now, yes, they're offering, this is to relocate it to the cement pad south of the digger shed, as they called it, to collect that bottles of cans.
How do they say, south, isn't it east?
East, south of the digger shed.
The little pad, where that little tank is.
Oh, way over, where that, gas tank is, kind of?
Yep.
Okay.
One of the gas...
I thought it was gonna be on the east side, okay.
And then it talks about that they will try to stay ahead of cleaning it out, either party can terminate this agreement. Then you want you to communicate to Boosters directly with Kelly and Boosters, and, what else? They are asking for possibly as late as June, I think, I don't remember where that was now, to do that, but they told me they intend to have it quite a bit before that. Before June 1st of '24, have that relocated, but that is what the agreement currently says.
And we do have room in the side of the digger shed to throw overflow in there.
Okay, that was my next question, if you had written for, otherwise we're gonna try to build something. Right, they talked about putting in a building, or whatever, and that's part of the problem with that over there, is the building that's there now needed to be gone a few years ago, and they've been nicely waiting, because it's still been used for this cause, and so... Now that can happen, unless they get cans out, well, actually, they can start putting the cans there, once this agreement is approved anyway, I think that, I'm sure. Anyone have any other questions related to the... Request?
I'll make the motion that we approve... I'll make the resolution to approve this South Brian Music Boosters can cage relocation agreement.
I'll second.
Lexi's made the motion, and Jean has seconded to approve the South Brian Music Boosters can cage relocation agreement as presented this evening in your packets. Does anyone have questions or comments related to the motion on the table?
Does that building be in the same shape that they store cans in right now? I guess I've never looked at it, so.
The, I think the roof is kind of, you could say, a bit...
It's not really weathered, and then the door faces north, and it's barely hanging on, and then it's iced in usually, so you can't get the inner out unless you're...
Okay, just was wondering, it's one text. My voice is that, is that Jean's, too, or no? Okay. So she'll probably take it down, huh?
I think that's what she wanted to do, yeah. Any other questions on that? Otherwise, we'll call for a roll call vote on this. Uh, Jean Enrau?
Yes.
Lexi Murphy?
Yes.
Jay Jones?
Yes.
Carol Hongkum?
Yes.
Steve Heron?
Hi, yes.
It's all positives, all yes votes reported, no nays. Resolution approved. Uh, your next item is a resolution to approve the temporary employee sharing service agreement with City Hartley for wastewater treatment testing. This also is in your packet, and Kelly talked about this last time, or a few times ago, I think?
Yep.
Heard about it, it's just a temporary until they can get tested.
And Curtis is gonna come about once a week, and me and Michelle figured out, with what they said, the wage, the mileage, and the ipers, it's gonna be about roughly 70 bucks a week for him to come. And Josh, I think, is taking his test in a couple weeks, and I put in to take my test in the end of November, and as soon as they could get me in, was February 2nd, so.
And this is for the sewer, right?
Sewer, yeah.
Because you bolt it past our water?
Just Jackson's past our water.
Well, it's something we need.
And just to be done, right?
There's really, yeah. You gotta, yeah.
You don't have any, when I read it...
We don't have an option right now.
I asked him about 30 days, if something, they got their test passed, it would probably be a full 30 days.
I'm sure it would be...
But I said I would think they'd be good about saying, no, we're done.
Right.
So, yeah, 30 days, I would think so.
It's a six-month window.
Should be plenty of time. I assume testing times are hard to get, so, if it's not passed, then you have to get another... They wait another three months to get...
Right.
Really?
I'll make the resolution... I'll make the resolution to approve the temporary employee sharing service agreement with the City of Hartley for the wastewater treatment testing.
Second.
All right, Lexi's introduced the resolution, and Steve has shown support for to approve the temporary employee sharing service agreement with City of Hartley for wastewater treatment testing. Do we have any other questions related to this... Agreement? Okay, there are none, we can call for a roll call vote. Jean Enrau?
Yes.
Lexi Murphy?
Yes.
Jay Jones?
Yes.
Carol Hongkum?
Yes.
Steve Heron?
Yes.
All ayes, no nays, resolution approved. Uh, the Polina City Little League Report is included, right? That's on the works of it here. She did not attend, but she has her information, and we can get your report number if you want to ask questions. But they have put out the request again for 3,500 for softball. And then they've got all your financial materials included there. So we'll include that in your budget's request going forward.
We don't make the motion on that 3,500 yet?
No. Because baseball, we'll still come over to, so usually just consider it all, and see the rest of the budget items, keep that in mind. They're just kind of showing us what they've done. This is a manual report now. Okay, um, approve payment for inspection and proceed with quotes for remediation of asbestos from city property at 105 North Main, and so obviously we had some discussion on this topic already, because of, I don't know. And you've already seen the inspection, which you approved payment of claims, that would serve you on there, I guess, so that is considered accomplished, but they are looking for permission to seek out the quotes to get it remediated. Remember when the, when the bank gave it to the city, they had a certain amount, 60,000 in there, which was to accomplish the asbestos remediation, which has not been done yet, and now we've had, how many new premises, two new premises? And the water leak fix, and we're staying utilities, anyway, as you see in your fund statement, that account is slowly depleted, at 30, you have a fund, you have a plan right now. State Bank capital project total, I'll just show us what came out of there.
I can go get the total, if you want me to see my...
Is it on here, on the...
No, just the amount, just... But utilities, 700, so anyways, we have, I don't think remediation has gotten more economical at this point. So I think it would be in everyone's best interest to proceed going forward, your other options, of course, would be to demolish the building, which you would think would be cheaper, but it's not. The estimates, I believe, for like the junior high over there is half a million dollars, and that's a more sized building here. I would say, pretty close to a half, a lot, it would be a lot, plus you still have to remediate the asbestos when you do that, I believe.
Yes.
To destroy, so...
Do you think we have to remove all the asbestos?
Yes.
Sure.
Like when they did that one in front of the corner there? When they were gonna take it all down? They had to go and...
Well, I know when they take it down, but I'm saying, if we don't take it down, though, why?
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking about tearing it down.
No.
Either way.
If you don't disturb...
You don't disturb it, yeah, on the pipes, on the pipes you have to, but on the floor, as long as you don't disturb the floor here, all right.
Floor and ceiling, if you look in our report, it was three different spots, that guy said.
Yeah, there's like pipes, though.
But can you legally sell it if you don't have the asbestos taken care of?
I think you have to have asbestos taken care of before you can sell it, or if you sell it.
Can we legally cover it? The school does it.
Cover it up?
Yeah, that's how the school covers it, they cover it with carpet. Yes, they do.
I don't know about that.
Don't say they don't, if I know.
They're taking some out right now.
Yeah, no, that's how they did it, they covered it with carpet.
Well, right now, that wouldn't work for the ceiling so much, I guess you could...
No, but that, the ceiling isn't, is probably, is not the pipes.
Or the floor, I thought when we had that other guy came in to check it, he said, or they dug holes in it, and it was, it was the floor, was bad.
The floor in the basement is.
And the ceiling cots down there, and...
The old...
So how much are they, how much, yeah, the old B shop, how much are they saying now?
They don't, they, this is just to ask if you guys want them to seek quotes on it, or otherwise Kelly or anyone can, but they just wanted to talk about it. I've been noticing that our account is going down, and yet we haven't done the very big thing we were tasked with doing when we got gifted the building. So I think it would make sense, because otherwise we're gonna spend all that money slowly, and then when we need to take action, we'll have to pay and...
They, they offered to do it, and they have the time to do it.
They have the ability, and it's a good practice for them to call and get quotes, and they'll bring them to you as per approval, at that time, you can still say no, but...
Why are we spending that money when it was allocated just for that asbestos?
I don't know, because that's where, where does the firm come from, when we spent for a firm, it came up here.
Because that money was allocated there for asbestos from Iowa State Bank.
I agree, and that's my concern.
That's what I'm just saying.
Did you find an amount, Michelle?
We had 35,822.
Is left.
35K. So as it's going down because of utilities or whatever, we don't have a renter in there, so no one else is paying those, it's our cost, and we had to leave, I mean, we, there are costs, carrying costs to keeping a building like that, operational, whether it's being used or not. So I thought, while that money is still there and budgeted per se, it should probably be spent as it was intended, to get as close as we can. But this was just to allow them to cover for the report that they did, which was very thorough, I believe the guy was there four plus hours, and as you see, it was 41 pages, I think Steve pointed out. So there's a lot of details, and some of it requires, I think they're gonna fix right now, some of the pieces that they already pointed out, so that's good. And then to let them decide if they want to go look for remediation companies and see where my cost is.
I mean, if they want to call and get the quotes, I don't, I mean, that's good practice for them to be doing, so I would, I wouldn't make the motion as they can get quotes. Call and get quotes. Is that what we're, we're writing?
That's the... Okay, so Lexi's made a motion to go ahead and allow the CAPS associates to proceed with quotes, or seeking quotes for remediation of asbestos. Does her motion have support?
I'll second.
Jean has seconded that. So because the inspection is already been approved, the ask is right now for the motion and second from Lexi and Jean is to proceed with, allow the CAPS associates to proceed with quotes for remediation of asbestos from the city property at 105 North Main. There are no other questions or comments, we can call for a vote, all in favor...
Well, I mean, is this something that we're, we're doing, the city's doing, or is the CAPS program going to, going to do the...
The CAPS program is difficult.
They're gonna go and look for quotes, and it's a...
Present them to you for...
It's a project, it's a project for them.
For the school, yeah.
And they'll present that to us.
Right, they'll, whenever they get their results, one, two, or three...
And there won't be any forwarding until we find out...
There won't be any decisions made on, on you guys, without us, that's what I get now.
Yeah, so hopefully it's under 35,000 or not, but either way, you'll know how far off you are, because that's an important number you'll need in budget development for your next fiscal year as well, so, good time to have this handled. Does that make sense? Everybody's understanding the CAPS students will seek the, just quotes for remediation of asbestos, to present to council, should they choose to act or not act. Okay, all in favor of allowing CAPS associates to proceed with quote receipt, with seeking quotes for immediate remediation of asbestos from city property at 105 North Main, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, no nays, motion carries. Liquor license for Dollar General 20191, it's a Class B. Do you have the expiration date, I don't remember when it was?
Have they had any problems?
Maybe you could probably cancel that.
Not to, I don't...
They wouldn't give it to them, because they had problems, including...
No, that's true.
Not, not regarding...
Not relating to this.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
All right, Carol's made a motion.
Do you like a license for Dollar General?
I'll second.
Carol's made a motion, and Jean has seconded to approve the Class B liquor license for, for Dollar General 20191. So any other questions related to this ask? There are none, all in favor of approving a Class B liquor license for General, for Dollar General 20191, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes heard, motion carries. Uh, you have Brian Fish as asking to be relieved of his duties as airport manager as of the thirty-first essentially of this year. In a week or two.
Has anybody came forward and taken over?
Not yet. So we'll put that out there as a couple of different jobs or...
We do the runway sometimes, Hilton doesn't. I'll move to accept his resignation.
I'll second that. Motion by Steve and a second by Carol to accept his resignation as airport manager effective twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Any other questions? Thank you for your service, Kevin, the city, and airport. Sure, he's been part of it a long time, I believe.
Yes, he has.
And we'll call for a vote, all in favor of accepting Brian Fish's resignation as airport manager effective twelve thirty-one twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Fish. All right, we have, um, the fire department has already approved Gavin Heron as a firefighter to join the crew and you have the ability to add his approval to your agenda tonight. Some of his information. Not too much. He would be a regular firefighter because he's over the age of eighteen, I see, right?
I'll make a motion to approve him.
I'll second.
Gavin Heron as a firefighter.
Just made the motion and Lexi, that was a second?
Yes.
Carol's moved and Lexi has seconded to approve the application for Gavin Heron as firefighter. Do we have any other discussion on this agenda item? All in favor of approving the application for Gavin Heron as a firefighter, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. That was all ayes, motion carries. No nays. All right, looking ahead, we will have a resolution to set your January twenty twenty-four council meeting dates. It's January second and sixteenth at five thirty PM. We did discuss this last meeting because of the holidays and such, those dates need to shift.
Those are both on Tuesdays, correct?
Yes, those are both on Tuesdays in this month of January.
And the fifteenth is what, President's, what is that, Martin, what is this fifteenth, January?
Fifteenth was a caucus.
It's caucus day.
Oh, it's a caucus, I couldn't think of what it was for holiday.
Got it now. I was like, they call it, they call it, they call that in Arizona, one hundred and thirteen minutes? They call that in Arizona, one hundred and thirteen minutes?
Is that Martin fifteen day also? Are we?
Uh, I think it's a fifteenth.
Fifteen, yes.
Fifteenth is.
Okay.
I thought it was a holiday. You guys don't have it, or do you have it for Martin fifteen, I think so.
I'll make the...
State everyone does it.
Doesn't it?
I'll make the resolution to set January twenty twenty-four city council meeting dates of January second and the sixteenth at five thirty PM.
Okay, Lexi has introduced the resolution.
I'll second.
Gina supported that. Resolution on the table is to set January twenty twenty-four council meeting date is January second and the sixteenth at five thirty PM. Is there any other questions, conversations related to that, those two date changes? Very none, we'll call a real call vote. And reverse for fun. Jean O'Gra?
Yes.
Lexi Murphy?
Yes.
Jay Jones?
Yes.
Carol Hongkum?
Yes.
Steve Herring?
Yes.
All ayes, resolution passes. Okay, uh, we're two reports, Gavin rolls the past, I feel like we should slow this down. I got a lot to say.
I'm waiting.
No, as you know, this is my last mayor Monday with you, or well, it'll be Tuesday in some cases, but looking forward to handing off the reins tomorrow. And we've been talking a lot here in the interim and he's trying to get the, the reins and the handle on things here and so that he can make a transition smooth and I hope you do the same when, uh, Gina is obviously staying and you've got two new additions to add to the crew that will hopefully also continue to make positive progress for our town that we love. And Jay, do you have anything you would like to say as your...
No, I just, good luck to you guys and hope you keep moving forward and to listen to what they say.
Okay, Lexi, would you have any?
Don't read the fiction in the, the high-priced toilet paper.
Well, just good luck and make Cleveland keep going good.
Thanks for your service, you guys, thank you.
Okay, Kelly, Michelle, Billson?
Uh, we got a new slide and look how plexiglass thing at the park.
Is it still yellow?
Huh?
Is it yellow?
Yeah.
Put it in.
Yep, it's installed and, yep.
I was gonna say, we weren't, what's it different?
I tried it out. It's good. Tyler did get his, uh, permit for class B and his air brakes, so we're moving forward on that. He got his air brakes test passed today, so...
How's he doing, good?
Yeah. Um, planning on this week, going hard after stump grantings. It's probably all we're gonna concentrate on unless something else comes up, so...
It's pretty mild winter.
Yep, been a nice winter.
Are you gonna step up with the street sweeper, just scoops?
I think we might get a couple of skid loaders, the wheel loader and the dump truck, so...
I'm good.
We've had one guy doing it for, yeah, and we're gonna get all four guys going and just see how hard we can hack it out, so...
Is Josh scooping some gutter veterans up there today, Monday?
Well, there's a bunch of mud they got dumped in front of...
Artons in there.
Artons, we picked that up.
Yeah, who dumped the mud?
It looks like a kid from a video.
It was there when it dropped off in the...
They kicked it off their truck, yeah, something.
They went out and went in and they got food or something, Jay Jones is what I think.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Kicked a bunch of mud out.
Yeah. It's a good idea to scoop up some of those leaves though, they'll suck in all air since we're not frozen down yet, amazingly.
So maybe you could run that street sweeper a couple of spots before the snow actually does come. Unless we've changed and we're moving more south.
I'm good with no snow.
Yeah. Kinda nice, we'll work once out this way. Kinda nice on a snow budget. I know.
We did get the, uh, tree pile out there, if anybody wants to go out there and look, it's... We gave a bunch of our ash pile and some of the dirt pile that wasn't really used to us to, uh, Scott Inglekey and he filled in a waterway with it and, yeah, cleaned it up pretty nice out there, so...
Good, mm, so we all ready for those trees, huh?
Yeah. Yep, so we got somewhere to put snow if it ever comes and...
Nice. Sounds good.
I got, I got something he's done. Um, I've heard from a few people about the stray feral cats in this town and I hope you guys do something about it because, you know, the, there's supposedly an order says that they're not allowed to be stray cats and some people are and it's causing a big problem because then they're going on other people's porches and everything like that, so... I think we need to do something about it, I don't know what.
Can we?
Yeah.
Can we trap one in the room?
Yes, trap me to free.
Where, where's that at though? Where the, who does that?
We would have to do, we have to pay for it, it's a city, we have to pay a vet to...
We should talk to Donna Dawson, she did it one time to a whole bunch of them. Yeah, and she took it over to like Lower Ends or somewhere like that, so... But there's a lot of them.
And they're healthy.
Yeah, well, they're getting fed, they're getting fed.
But they're very healthy and they're, some of them are really nice little cats.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that I, I bet a few complaints.
I know.
And it's...
I was here one day when one lady came in here too. And she don't like cats. Like it's simple, she said.
I don't have mice around my house, so I don't...
Well, that's what somebody else said. It may, might be kinda good.
Mostly problem Mondays and Wednesdays when I get into the government and start flipping that all out. If people, if their list not all the way down, I think that's when it gets to be annoying.
There's a stray dog that comes into town too, you know, a black one.
I haven't seen that one for a while, there's another dog that I've caught on my security camera running around in my...
This, this one's about medium size and he has his tail between his legs all the time. He lives up behind Mill Creek in the field out there and he comes in and when I warm up my truck in the morning, some mornings he comes around and behind the bar, comes down there.
What's he look like?
He's black, just a black and, yeah.
Your cam, that hit.
Yeah.
You've seen him too?
Yeah. Tammy caught some on her, on her, um, camera outside.
Yeah, Aaron's...
It's always at like midnight.
Yeah, Aaron Delby says he comes by about two o'clock every morning, yeah.
And the other morning?
When I opened up, there was a stray sleeping in the leaves out here in front.
Dog or cat?
A dog.
Dog.
Dog, really?
It took off. How fast?
Was it, was he pure black?
No, he could look like a shepherd cross.
Oh, okay.
See, I think that's the one I've caught on my camera.
We, those people take care of those dogs over there on the end of town, I haven't heard much about them.
Martin's old house?
Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah.
Martin and Teddy's old house?
Yeah. No, no, the Howard Cross is that house. Those white, those white dogs, yeah, I haven't heard them. There was one loose today, I see.
Yeah, that was, that one, I mean, they had it staked in the ground anyway, it should pull the cord first.
Dogs can get away if they want.
Do you have a dog like that?
Yeah.
He can crawl under the fence too.
Yeah, I had a big dog, he could crawl under fences. I don't know how he did it. No, but I, I hope you guys, and it, it's a bad situation because people, you know, go, oh, you're cats and that, but we've had a lot of complaints about it, so...
I do, I need all the budgets from all the departments no later than January tenth.
Are you sending it out to, I mean, like ambulance and all them?
Yeah.
So they know.
Okay.
Yep. And the library, I think you already, kind of ready for an audit, is he?
Right, has meeting.
Yeah, Ellen has meeting, so I'm worried to approve it first. January tenth?
January tenth, huh?
Kate and I have started figuring out a project we want to do next year for around the school, which will be putting all that stuff underground and a lot of those, a lot of those poles are not in that great a shape, so it would be... I mean, and a lot of those poles are in the way of the parking and stuff like that at the school, so getting it under down would just be... We've got, I think, all the, today me and Kate went through what we have on hand and what we need to get and we're getting quotes on what it takes to do what we want to do, so...
And we need the school to get with you, the order transformers too, that's, I mean, I know it's not your fault, yeah. Yeah, they gotta do that.
Because everything has got a long lead, lead time, so...
Still does, huh?
Yeah.
Certain stuff, but... A lot of the rubber goods have a long lead time and transformers definitely have a long lead time.
Crazy.
Wire and stuff we can usually get pretty easy, but... Uh, I don't think, uh, just back to the budget, if, I don't know, maybe this year's you already got it entered, but whenever you've got all this year's calendar years entered, if you can slap me a copy, so I can look at the numbers so far.
Your vehicles are all in good shape, aren't they?
Well...
Get miles on one of them?
My, yeah, I mean, the one I'm driving is, the one that's scheduled to be replaced anyway is, is gonna need a new battery when it goes for whatever time it's used service again and I, I didn't get to, they had already closed the order window last fall for putting in a new one and, and, yeah.
Should've kept your crown big.
At the time, sort through the stupid, they'll cheat anyway to pick out the unnecessary craps.
And you have Matt's included a note about what happened at their last meeting in the back of your packet, the library board. Do you have any questions on that? It would be nice if our committees had a summary report that you could present to the next councilor and mayor for the January second meeting, a little report of what you did all this last year, what you accomplished, what you'd like to accomplish. And then obviously he'll probably be talking to you, I assume, to determine committees going forward, so... That would be great. Other council comments?
I'll make the motion re-adjourn.
Lexi's made a motion to adjourn, the final motion.
I'll second that.
Jay, you're calling for a second.
Cool.
Okay, we have any other discussion related to adjournment? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Meeting adjourned, all ayes, motion carries, meeting adjourned six sixteen PM. Join the rest of us.
Why your shortest one, right?
Join the rest of your time, thank you for being very efficient today. Finale, one of our finales. Kelly?
All morning girls, Dimer? Are you skipping the rounds? Well...
Wait, when did you, did you need one back? I just needed to put the words over in that.
That's seven or seven thirty?
Seven. Starts at seven.
For you guys.
Or is it seven thirty?
It doesn't take long.
It was seven. Oh, yeah. Elder's seven.
I can hold up, do a selfie, there you go.
Wow, that's good. What are we gonna do?
So see what you're seeing for that first half, does it look like?
A letter signed in paper.
Well, we'll be filling in full lap.
Carol, you wanna look real quick?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I just...
Oh, I'm like, I know it's the best.
No, I said you didn't want to.
You wanna do that?
Yeah.
You wanna do that?
Yeah.
How's your son doing?
Cause he coaches, he, let's see, the coaching Friday nights, then on Saturday mornings, deer.
Oh. Yeah, no, it's, it's fine.
Omaha yesterday and then we said, great, Alabama, then he went to Bass Pro Sunday morning. And I asked, well, you gotta know such a deer.
Your souvenir tonight.
Right?
Yes.
Might as well do it while you're young.
Yeah. She's still recording me.
Are we supposed to have these or what? Are we supposed to have these?
That's your souvenir, or you can throw away.
I'll frame it.
There you go.
I got a nice plaque to be on the school board, you actually get a plaque to where you go.
Meeting's over, Mary. The office is closed.
Could be social gathering, which is allowed.
Did you watch the, did you watch the Zoom presentation? The one that said fifteen days to put the, that you and Richard said, oh my God, we're with the Iowa Newspaper Association, they're terrible. Which you don't belong to. oh my God, we're with the Iowa Newspaper Association, we handle, which you don't belong to.
No, you're good.
I'm all right.
Such a, such a small one.
It's gonna be. Oh, yeah, she'll write one.
Did you watch it?
I did, well, I, um. People may get some, you're doing an app. Um, let's say, cause I can, oh, cause there's.
I made Christmas cards, so we're not doing anything illegal.
You're gonna do one some of it.
You know, I, I did, we did Christmas cards one time. We need time to send out cards and tell this is still on it. Now is the last time you did it. It's one time.
My mom, my mom, we had every other year.
I have a friend that they, they have two batches of everything. They do their own. I'm like, how the hell do they do it? And they travel like my sister. My sister, they travel, they went, they went down to Peru, I mean, months ago and climbed some freaking mountain.
Oh, really?
And my brother-in-law, next year with my niece, are going to Africa and climbing a mountain.
Wow, that's the second highest one. Isn't Everest the first one?
Yeah. And then two weeks after he comes back, he's home with me and my brother and Eric of the decaying, appropriate fishing and processing and all this future to-do items within their. So.